Okay. Good evening and welcome to the Crestwood Board of Education. I call the Crestwood Board of Education meeting to order at 7:18. Can we please stand for the pledge?
A pledge will be given to the flag of the United States of America, into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, can we get a roll call?
Mrs. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Baydun?
Here.
Ms. Elzayat?
Here.
Ms. Falaz?
Here.
Myself, Ms. Kaminsky?
Here.
Mr. Sabah?
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a form.
Thank you.
Can we read the consent agenda? Okay, I recommend... I don't know why I always do this. Board of Education approval is recommended for the items listed on the consent agenda, which include the August 22nd, 2022 Board Agenda, the minutes from the study session on Monday, July 25th, 2022, the minutes from the regular meeting on Monday, July 25th, 2022, and the check registry dated July 1st through July 31st, 2022.
Support.
Okay, I have a recommendation from our secretary, Ms. Janoon, for our recommended items of the August 2022 Board Agenda, the minutes from the study session on Monday, July 25th, the minutes from the regular meeting on Monday, July 25th, and the check register dated 1 through July 31st, 2022, supported by Ms. Kaminsky. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. And we will move on to our business report.
Thank you. Number one, approval of the requisitions. Attached is the list of requisitions. Our item... Oh, sorry. The attached list of requisitions are items that buildings or departments would like to purchase for their upcoming needs. The requisitions have gone through all the appropriate approval processes and have been approved by administration for purchase. In addition, there are funds available to make these purchases. Once the requisitions are approved, they will be processed and purchase orders will be sent out.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Sabah?
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the requisitions per attachment 4A1. Support.
Okay, there's a recommended action that the Board approved the requisitions per attachment 4A1 by Mr. Sabah, supported by Mr. Baydun. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. Number two, approval of confirming purchase orders. The attached confirming purchase orders are items that needed to be processed prior to the Board approval to secure evaluation professional development.
Madam Chair?
Ms. Kaminsky?
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the confirming purchase orders per attachment 4A2.
Support. Okay, there's a recommended action by Ms. Kaminsky that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the confirming purchase orders per attachment 4A2, supported by Secretary Janoon. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Number three, approval of contract for Wayne Risa Early Literacy. Crestwood School District has been awarded an Early Literacy Grant by Wayne Risa. This allows the district to hire an elementary literacy coach to assist with the students in grades K through 4. This grant is the amount of $112,000, which allows the district to provide the support students need. The remainder of the position is funded through 31A. The district has been receiving the grant since the 2020-21 school year.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Baydun?
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the career and technical education agreement... Oh, I'm sorry. Approve the one-year contract with Wayne Risa for the 22-23 school year. See attachment 4A3.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor that the Crestwood Board of Education approve one-year contract with Wayne Risa for the 2022-23 school year by Mr. Baydun, supported by Mr. Sabah. Any questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. Number four, approval of contract career tech partnership. The Crestwood School District has been part of a longstanding agreement with the Dearborn Heights, Number Seven, Westwood Community Schools, and Windout Public Schools to provide various opportunities to students within our all districts. Career and technical education agreement allows our students to participate in technical programs currently not offered at Crestwood High School. The agreement will run July 1st, 2022, through June 30th of 2023. It is an excellent opportunity for our students to obtain experience otherwise unavailable to them.
Madam Chair?
Ms. Falaz?
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the career and technical education agreement for the 22-23 school year. See attachment 4A4.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Ms. Falaz that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the career and technical education agreement for the 2022-23 school year, supported by Mr. Sabah. Any questions? Signif... All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Number five, approval of contract for Building Bridges Therapy Center. Crestwood School District has utilized Building Bridges Therapy Center for the past several years to provide hard-to-obtain specialized services. The district would like to continue to utilize the company to provide occupational and physical therapy to students as required based on their need. The duration of the contract would be through June 30th of 2023. The cost of the services is comparable to other companies in the area and would only be utilized on an as-needed basis.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Sabah?
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the one-year contract with Building Bridges Therapy Center for the 2022-23 school year. See attachment 4A5. Support.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Mr. Sabah, supported by Ms. Janoon at the Crestwood Board of Education. Approve the one-year contract with Building Bridges Therapy Center for the 2022-23 school year. See attachment 4A5. Any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just want to commend administration because we continue to put the social, emotional, and physical needs of our kids out there first and foremost, and I think it needs to be recognized by the community that this district works really hard to make sure our kids' needs are met.
You're welcome. Thank you. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Number six, approval of contract in it's with FER Development, not consultant, and that was my error, I apologize. Crestwood School District is asking to enter into a one-year agreement with FER Development to assist with the monitoring of the district construction projects. The projects have brought a high demand for additional expertise in the trades area, and the district believes it would be beneficial to have a project consultant to work on behalf of the district in order to assist with progress assessment. The contract would be for one year and payments made based on the number of hours worked, not to exceed the amount of $44,000. The contract has been attached for review.
Madam Chair?
Ms. Kaminsky?
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve an agreement with FER Development starting August 30th, 2022, through June 30th, 2023. See attachment 4A6.
Support.
Okay, we have a recommended action by Ms. Kaminsky, supported by Ms. Janoon, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve an agreement with FER Development starting August 30th, 2022, through June 30th, 2023. See attachment 4A6. Any discussion?
Yes, I have a question.
Ms. Berry?
I wanted to know who... Where are they from? Are they like local?
They're a local company, yes.
Like Dearborn?
I believe their headquarters are in Dearborn Heights.
Oh, okay. Is it like an architect firm or...
They're... They're from... Their focus area is on the trades and construction. All their certifications of everybody that works for this company are construction-based.
Madam Chair?
Ms. Falaz?
So would he or she be reporting to you? How often? When would they give you updates? Or does it... How would that all work? And would they be... What portions, I guess, would they be overseeing? How often would they report?
They would report directly to me. They would work in conjunction with me in order to inform me on making sure that we're following the proper procedures, that the construction companies are actually providing the services that we've required. I am not an expert in any of the trades whatsoever, so to have that expertise guiding me to make sure that we're following the appropriate guidelines in that aspect is greatly appreciated.
So would your expectation be that he come to the site a couple times a week, every day?
I foresee it to be anywhere from five to 10 hours a week possibly, depending on making sure overseeing what projects being done at what time, making sure that we're on track in any delays or whatnot. And because of the fact that they know the industry a lot better than I do, they would be able to advise whether the construction company is actually saying truthful information, not that they would, but that way we have a second opinion as to what that aspect is.
And every discussion he'd have with you solely or decision or anything?
He would have no decisions. It would all be based through us, as it currently is. It's really just a go-between to assist so that I don't have that expertise in those areas.
Right.
We need a subject matter expert.
Correct, yes.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you for your report, Ms. Morgan. Okay, we move on to our personnel report.
I will handle that, Madam President. All right, so we have several new hires, so I'll go through them quickly but clearly. So Section A, instructional appointments. Appointment of math teacher, Crestwood High School, Nada Shafiedine. Ms. Shafiedine earned her Bachelor of Science in Secondary Education from Grand Canyon University. She earned her Master's of Education Administration from Grand Canyon University. She has 14 years of instructional experience. Her commitment to encouraging higher-order thinking to increase student performance will be a great asset to our district. She comes to us in the National Heritage Academy in Taylor. The second appointment would be appointment biology teacher, Crestwood High School, Charlotte Platsky. Ms. Platsky earned her Bachelor of Science in Secondary Comprehensive Sciences from Eastern Michigan University, which is a DI endorsement. She completed her student teaching at Crestwood High School this past semester, and she has proven that she is a great fit for our district. The third appointment would be appointment of fifth-grade teacher, Riverside Middle School, Nada Mackey. Ms. Mackey earned her Master's of Education from Wayne State University with endorsements in language arts and social sciences. She received her administrative certification in June 2010. She has 19 years of instructional experience and three years of administrator experience. She is excited to become part of the Crestwood team. She comes to us from Pontiac Academy for Excellence. Our fourth appointment of an ELA teacher, Crestwood High School, Ali Hanawi. Mr. Hanawi earned his Master of Education from the University of Michigan with an endorsement for language arts. He has three years of instructional experience. He is an English Language Arts Content Leader for the National Heritage Academies in Detroit Region. He is excited to return and teach at his previous high school. He comes to us from Reach Charter Academy in Roseville. Our fifth appointment of second-grade teacher at Kinlock Elementary, Mara Alhamdani. Ms. Alhamdami earned her Bachelor in Elementary Education from the University of Michigan. She is ESL certified. She completed her student teaching at Kinlock this past semester. She is excited to be returning to Crestwood. Number six, appointment of music teacher at Hy-Vee Elementary, Karina Pisani. Ms. Pisani earned her Bachelor of Music Education from Central Michigan University. She has three years of instructional experience teaching music at the elementary level. She is excited to share her love for music with the students at Crestwood. She comes to us from Frankenmuth School District. Our seventh appointment is an appointment of a third-grade teacher at Kinlock Elementary, Elizabeth Yuris. Ms. Yuris earned her Bachelor of Arts in Elementary Education from Coastal Carolina University. She has four years of instructional experience. She has a passion for being the support for our future generations and teaches specifically to serve the needs of the children. She will be a great fit for our district. She comes to us from Dove Academy of Detroit. Our eighth appointment is of a second-grade teacher at Hillcrest Elementary, Salam Soror. Ms. Soror earned her Bachelor of Arts in Elementary Education from the University of Michigan Dearborn. She is also ESL in doors. She has 19 years of instructional teaching experience and experience creating classroom where students learn how to become independent and critical thinkers. She comes to us from the Dearborn Public Schools. Our ninth appointment of schools is a school psychologist for elementary, Lisa Formosa-Little. Ms. Formosa-Little earned her Bachelor of Arts in Psychology from the University of Michigan Dearborn. She earned her Master's of Arts in School and Community Psychology from Wayne State University. She also completed the School Psychologist Specialist Level Program. She has 17 years of experience working as a school psychologist. Ms. Little has a deep understanding of student development stages and is well-versed in the use of psychoeducational assessment tools. She comes to us from Dearborn Public Schools. If I just like to make one statement before I give the recommended action, with our partnerships with the University of Michigan and Wayne State is why we were able to bring in student teachers and then hire them when positions became available. This is part of our building from within.
Great.
So recommended action that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of the candidates named in action items A1, A2, A3, A4, A5, A6, A7, A8, and A9, according to the CFT Contract Effective Pending Acceptable Criminal Background Check and other employment documentation as required by law.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Sabah?
I do second that recommendation that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of the candidates named in action items A1, A2, A3, A4, A5, A6, A7, A8, and A9, according to the CFT Contract Effective Pending Acceptable Criminal Background Checks and Other Employment Documentation as Required by Law. Support.
Okay, we have a recommended action on the floor by Mr. Sabah that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of the candidates named on action items A1, A2, A3, A4, A5, A6, A7, A8, and A9, according to the CFT Contract Effective Pending Acceptable Criminal Background Check and Other Employment Documentation as Required by Law, seconded by Mr. Baydun. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
I abstain also. Could you do a roll call vote, Madam Secretary?
Mr. Sabah?
Yes.
Mrs. Berry? I said abstain. Ms. Kaminsky?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Ms. Elzayat, you abstain.
Yes.
Mr. Baydun, yes. Ms. Falaz?
Yes.
Uh, motion passes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Morgan should remind me, don't read the recommended action. I just got on a roll there, so my apologies.
I didn't want to cut you off, because you were doing such a good job.
I was on a roll, I couldn't stop.
That's why I seconded it.
I know, I know.
And Mr. Sabah believed you, he seconded you.
That's why I jumped in so quick to say support.
All right.
That's on me.
Thank you, Mr. Baydun.
Thank you, okay.
All right, B, non-instructional appointments.
Question, Madam Chair?
Yes.
How many... When would we start to see our student teachers from the colleges? Like, is that usually first semester or second semester?
With... We're working on it right now. So it would be first semester, we're working on a couple to place currently, but I'm going to be honest, there's less out there now than there were even last year. So there... It's that... This is... This is a dilemma across the nation, and that's why we're doing the best we can to build from within.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. Non-instru... Oh, I just wanted to commend Linda and the team. I know she's not here, but she can see this, or you can pass it along, on the great job of finding all of these teachers that we so desperately need.
Thank you.
So thank you and kudos to you.
Thank you, and I will tell you, our building administrators also, that partnership and that teamwork is really making a difference.
Excellent, thank you. Non-instructional appointments, Dr. Masalim.
Thank you. Non-instructional appointments, okay. Our first non-instructional appointment is appointment of a head custodian at Hy-Vee Elementary, Johnny Luna. Mr. Luna has 26 years of experience in maintenance and custodial work. He is certified in advanced refrigeration and steam. He is also a certification in energy technology. Both certificates were earned at Henry Ford Community College. He has a high-pressure boiler license. He will be a great fit for our custodial team. The second appointment is of appointment of a kitchen assistant at Hillcrest Elementary, Rawana Shakur. Ms. Shakur is looking to occupy her time with her kids while her kids are in school. She has worked in childcare settings in the past and would like to work in a school environment. Ms. Shakur is excited about joining the Crestwood School District. The third appointment is of a... Third appointment of lunch monitor, Hillcrest Elementary, Kalthar Muhammad. Ms. Muhammad is a former employee who did lunch monitoring at Hillcrest prior to the pandemic. Now that her kids are no longer online and back in school, she is looking forward to going back to work and working as a lunch monitor. Our fourth appointment is an appointment of lunch monitor at Kinlock Elementary, Manal Saad. Ms. Saad is looking to keep busy for a few hours during the day and is looking forward to spending that time with elementary students as a lunch monitor at Kinlock.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Sabah?
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of the candidates named in action items B1, B2, B3, and B4, effectively pending acceptable criminal background checks and other employment documentation as required by law. Support.
We have a motion on the floor by Mr. Sabah, supported by Mr. Baydun, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of candidates named in action item B1, B2, B3, and B4, effectively pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam President, thank you, Board. Item C, Divine Child Instructional Appointment. We are... Our first and only appointment here is appointment of the English teacher, Patricia Keith. Ms. Keith earned her Master's of Arts in Education from Central Michigan University. She has 23 years of instructional experience. She was the head of the English department at her previous school. She is eager to use her teaching expertise in a new position at Divine Child.
Madam Chair?
Uh, Ms. Kaminsky?
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of the candidate named in action item C1, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law.
Support. We have a motion on the floor by Ms. Kaminsky, supported by Ms. Berry, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of the candidate named in action item C1, effectively pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam President, thank you, Board. D, contract renewals. One action item. Action on renewal of non-instructional staff contracts. Non-instructional contracts will come to the Board upon the renewal timetable. See attachments D1A and D1B.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Sabah?
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the renewal of all non-instructional staff contracts for the new terms. See attachment D1A and D1B.
Support.
Abstain, I think I have to abstain on this.
We didn't... Well, we didn't vote yet.
Okay, sorry.
We have a motion on the floor by Mr. Sabah that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the renewal of all non-instructional staff contracts for the new terms, supported by Ms. Janoon. All those in... Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
One abstention? Any nays? Motion carries, thank you.
Letter E, leave of absence. One leave of absence for Janine Zayed. Ms. Zayed, a district school nurse, is requesting a leave of absence from August 25th, 2022, through November 30th, 2022, for care of family for her new baby.
Madam Chair?
Ms. Falaz?
I request that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the leave of absence request for Janine...
Zayed.
Zayed, from August 25th through November 30th, 2022.
Support.
Okay, we have a... Mr. Sabah, thank you. We have a motion on the floor by Ms. Falaz, supported by Mr. Sabah, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the leave of absence request for Janine Zayed from August 25th, 2022, through November 30th, 2022. Any discussion? I have one question. Um, are we going to be short a nurse during this period, or are we making up for it?
We... Andrea's been working, and our current nurse, Maddie Berry, says she'll be okay.
Okay.
For the short time.
Okay, great, thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And congratulations to Ms. Janine on her new baby.
Thank you, Madam President, Board. That's the personnel report.
Okay. Informational items, are you reading them?
We usually don't read them.
Okay.
They're just there for...
I do have a question, though.
Mr. Sabah?
If that's okay. I get the landscape we're in right now, Dr. Masalim. I think the one thing that sticks out to me is music teacher, because I've seen that on there a few times over the last year and a half or so. What's going on? I mean, how long has the person resigning been with the district?
So the person that resigned, if you look at the resignation sheet, they were hired, brought to the Board, but then took a job somewhere else for more money. So we had to repost.
So it is one. Because that's always a concern with the arts, obviously.
Yeah.
You know, finding good qualified people to keep that program running strong, but it just stuck out to me, and I wanted to ask, so...
Yeah.
I have a feeling that's going to be a conversation we're going to have quite a bit into the near future, right?
And what I can say is, I'm really appreciative of the Crestwood Federation of Teachers. The CFT has really been supportive on like doing what is best for teachers in a respectful way. And, um... But it is... It's, like I said, I was at a superintendent's meeting last week, and we were just all like, from bus drivers to lunch monitors to teachers, like, we're looking for people.
It wasn't a moping session, I hope.
No, you know what? It was nice, because we were all like in the same boat, so it made us feel a little bit better.
Yeah, okay. I appreciate it, thank you.
No, of course. Thank you for the question.
Thank you. Superintendent's report.
Okay, Superintendent's report. Madam President, Board, I have one action item and some informational items. The first item, which is an action item, is board policy. A board policy review and rewrite is necessary to ensure that our board policies are updated and legally aligned, as well as aligned with current best practices. There are two viable options to doing a rewrite on the policy and policy review. One would be to go through Trune Law Firm, and the other would be to go through Neola.
Madam Chair? Ms. Falaz?
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the district to work with Neola as the option to rewrite the review, uh, the board policy, to rewrite and review the board policy.
Support.
Okay, we have a recommended action by Ms. Falaz, supported by Mr. Baydun, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the district to work with Neola as the option the Crestwood Board of Education approve the district to work with Neola as the option to rewrite and review the board policy. Any discussion?
Yes, I do have a comment.
Ms. Berry?
I do recall that Neola was going to take at least a year to put in place, and I was hoping that we can put this stuff in place a lot sooner than that. And again, they don't have the attorneys that Trune provides, so...
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay.
No.
Okay, let's do a roll call. Madam Secretary?
Mr. Sabo.
Yeah.
Mrs. Berry?
No.
Mr. Baydun?
Yes.
Ms. El Zayat?
Yes.
Ms. Fawaz?
Yes.
I'm so hesitant on this, and I know it doesn't matter what my vote is, but...
Your vote always matters, Mr. Baydun.
Yes. Ms. Kaminsky?
No.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. We will update the Board as we move forward. So, we have some informational items?
Uh, one second.
Yes, I apologize.
I'm just wondering, do we... I mean, a year, I'm... So...
You voted yes.
Who sets... No, it wouldn't matter anyways. My question is, is who sets that timeline now?
If this is where Cabinet will work with Neola, and we can speed up that timeline.
And can you please update us, Dr. Musallam?
Definitely.
And see if Neola can expedite it, because I remember that Neola said that they needed a year, but that was quite a few months ago.
Yes, I will update the Board.
Yeah, if you could please get us an update on their...
We'll schedule a meeting, and we'll update the Board.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Well, I guess I... Okay, I guess we'll wait for the update, because I mean, if that's changing, then that was a lot to do with...
We don't feel it'll be a year. I can just say that. But we'll update the Board.
Can you have them at the next meeting?
We can.
To give us a quick update, please, on time? Because I think that's really important.
One of the first things we're going to do this week is schedule a meeting, our team with them, to start priming.
Thank you. Informational items?
So, informational items, just some quick updates. As we all know, school's around the corner. First day of school for students is August 29th. It is a half day. And I, you know, just have to say, I am really appreciative of the custodial maintenance team, the work that they've been doing this entire summer to get our schools ready. So, I appreciate them. I also appreciate our administrators, who have been working tirelessly to get things ready, and we're really looking forward to a really good, smooth start of the school year. We're really excited for this year. We have our Crestwood Back-to-School Kickoff, which will be Wednesday, August 24th, at Riverside Middle School, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. The first... Andrea, is it the first 500? The first 500 students who come will receive a brand-new backpack with supplies, thanks to the United Way. So, we've partnered with United Way, and we're going to continue growing that partnership. I also want to recognize some award nominations. So, the Dearborn Theater Association awarded, okay, many of our Crestwood students and staff. Student winners are Harry Kraftcheck, Mahdi Oseley, Jamie Peshki, Alina Hazimi, and Omar Baroudi. Our staff winners are Kayla Kubitz, Sean Mason, Matt Wodensky, Nick Letgowski, Paul Abbott, and Kathy Dallas. They also... We won both the Outstanding Play and Outstanding Musical Awards. And what I can tell you all is, Ms. Kubitz, I mean, since I've come in as superintendent, you know, if we asked her, "Kayla, can you do this?", she did it three times over. You know, no excuses. I mean, she's been doing a phenomenal job at the theater program, and we're building that, and it's very nice.
How about a round of applause for that?
Yeah, a round of applause. Our theaters and arts program are going to continue to grow. I mentioned the United Way donation of 500 backpacks. I also want to thank Amity Foundation. They've been very supportive in this process as well. And you know what? I want to give a shout-out to Zainab Jawad Baydun. She's sitting back there. She doesn't like shout-outs, but I want to give her a shout-out, because she's really been moving fast and furious with these partnerships and with the parent advisory committees. So, I want to give you that shout-out. I'm just glad Zainab hasn't quit on me yet, because everything I keep putting on her shoulders.
All right.
Also, we want... We had 20-plus teachers who attended Solution Chief Professional Learning Community. You know, I didn't make the Board a copy. I will get you one, but this is going to be our professional development on Thursday. We're building off of that. It's really exciting. Access and the University of Michigan Dearborn, we've partnered with them for the Middle Eastern North African Census Drive to work with the federal government to identify that, and we're going to have them come and present to the Board in the next few board meetings. And... Were you? And, you know, again, back to the custodial maintenance team, not only with getting our buildings ready, but with all of the projects we have going on. So, I mean, they've really stepped up, so I appreciate them. And my only superintendent's commentary is, I'm really excited for the school year. Each of you have in front of you a coffee cup that says, "Be Bigger, Crestwood Chargers". That is our model this year. We are going to focus on being bigger than who we are. Setting our egos aside, setting the past aside, as a team, moving forward and being bigger than what we see in the mirror. That's going to be our model. That's going to be our focus as a Crestwood district this year. And then, the bags you have are from our web. T-shirts for you. And what I'd like to do is, the next board meeting, if everyone can wear their web shirt to show support for Riverside Middle School Web Program, which is another one of our social-emotional growth programs. So, we're excited. We've got a lot of good things coming. Everybody's excited, and I'm looking forward to seeing the teachers on Thursday. Like I put in my letter back, it's bittersweet. It's bitter that summer's coming to an end, but it's sweet to get back into the schools. And honestly, my favorite season is fall, so we're looking forward to it. Thank you, Board.
Thank you very much. I think we're going to move on to public comment at this time. Kristin, do we have sheets that have been filled out? Madam Secretary?
I'm just going to read this really quick, although I think you've heard this several times, and you know the rules. But I'm just going to...
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have a question.
Mr. Abdul Haq, just for order purposes, we're going to have Madam Secretary read the statement.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just stand there for one minute. This meeting of the Board is held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business. It is not to be considered a public-community meeting. There is a time for public participation during the meeting, as indicated in the agenda. This is not the time for debate or argument. Do not mention any student or staff's names. In order to permit a fair allotment of time to spark participants, speakers will be limited... Speakers will be limited to three minutes. The President may extend the time to five minutes per person when needed, up to a half hours, provided for public input. Direct all questions to the Board President. Thank you.
Thank you. Zaher Abdul Haq, 354 Rosemary. I have some questions to Dr. Musallam and to...
Yes, sir.
Trustee Fawaz. Dr. Musallam, would you please tell the Board how much the Board sent, or the school sent Mr. Mackey? The amount of the invoice you sent to him, the only invoice you ever sent to him for using the facility at Crestwood?
I don't have that off the top of my head. We did send him an invoice for his records when he used our facilities for basketball. I don't have it off the top of my head. I can get that to the Board, but it was the same thing that we're doing. He's giving us invoices for when we use his facilities, and we're giving him invoices for when he uses our facilities.
It was $90, actually. How many invoices the school sent over time to Mr. Mackey, to Elite Sports?
Mr. Mackey has only used our court that one time. He hasn't used our court, other than that.
Now, Mr. Mackey sent the school several invoices, which are in the hands of...
Five.
Five? Okay. Those came after the $90 bill, which was sent by the school, or before?
So, those came after, because, and I said this earlier in the conversation in the study session, I asked Mr. Mackey that we exchange invoices, so that we can keep a running record. This is something that this administration is putting in place, so that we can have transparency when any questions come up. How much are you using our facility? How much are we using your facility? And therefore, that's where that comes into play. So, to answer your question, it was in agreement between him and I that we need to start tracking the usage of each other's facilities.
To my knowledge, that, and I asked Ms. Fawaz to check if that was wrong, that he did send those invoices after your agreement with him, after you sent the $90 to his office?
Correct, because that was in our conversation. That was our agreement.
Did he ever receive any money from the school whatsoever?
He has not received any money from the school.
Did he ever pay the school any money?
Since my administration, I do not believe so.
Okay.
The lease agreement was outdated, Mr. Abdul Haq. It was a dollar for the Field of Dreams, but expired in 2018, isolated, different than Elite Sports.
I'm coming with my questions, if you'll be patient enough, okay?
Okay.
Now, who has been cutting the grass in the Field of Dream for the last seven, eight years?
Prior to my arrival, I do not know. But what I can tell you is, until...
I can tell you it was the district prior, because they were getting stuck in the trenches at the field.
And we just approved $20,000 maintenance to get that cut.
So, we approved a contract with Green Butler's recently to start cutting the grass. Mr. Mackey never charged...
Time is up, but we're going to extend...
I'm trying to ask questions, because...
Mr. Mackey never charged us for cutting the grass. He did it on his own, because we were still finalizing the contract with Green Butler's. When we finalized the contract with Green Butler's, I contacted Mr. Mackey, and I said, "Thank you. You don't need to cut the grass anymore. We hired a firm." Mr. Mackey's exact words were to me, "Why are you going to spend money? I'll just do it for you." And I said, "Because it's our responsibility. Allow us to handle that, and we have money budget to decide for it."
How much it costs to each cut?
For us, we have an open PO of $20,000, but we only get charged when Green Butler's goes out to the cut. They then invoice us once every time they cut.
What's the average cut cost?
I don't have that in front of me right now. We would have to look that up. I can get to that.
Around $800. Around $800.
Yeah, I didn't want to stay unless I had it specifically.
Who carries liability insurance for the kids when they go and play on the Field of Dreams?
When...
To your knowledge?
When Elite Sports or uses the Field of Dreams, we have on fire their liability insurance, so it's under them.
Also, Mr. Mackey has liability insurance. He carries any time he goes to prevent any liability to the school district.
Correct.
I just want the public to know these things.
Yes.
Okay? As of yesterday, my daughter asked me to ask Mr. Mackey to let her use his facility for four hours for students, I think, from the National Honor Society. And he was kind enough to cancel some teams coming and paying money in his facility to give her that time. So, on behalf of my kids and every kid in this district, I do thank Mr. Mackey, and I hope, you know, we really recognize what he has been doing, because when he... When... And I like to share this story with people, too. When he came to my office, he wanted to bid on the facility. I didn't know Mr. Mackey from Adam. I didn't know him. But he showed me the plans for his facility. He showed me a bank account, which has multimillion dollars in it, and I pushed for him to take it. He budgeted $750,000 for that facility. He actually spent $2.2 million of his own money. Those are the people who...
It rang again, but we're going to keep extending. It's okay. Go ahead.
Those are the people we need to do partnership with. When I come here or I go to the city to speak on issues, it's not personal. I try always to get the best deal for this school district, the most benefit for the students, and the most money possible, which I can bring to my city, if I can. I never, you know, do something unless really it will benefit the community at large. And I hope everybody should realize that and work toward that. Otherwise, we will be basically out of sync with each other, and I thank you very much.
I want to say, I'm sorry. I had... I didn't stop the time when Dr. Musallam was talking. That's why I added the extra time, because I'm supposed to stop it.
We didn't add the work hours for that time.
I thank you. I don't come every day, but this issue was very important.
It's a matter of policy, but we appreciate your comments.
You can have a couple of applause with it.
That's why we added the extra time.
Anytime. Thank you. Thank you for everything you guys doing, and I wish you good luck this year.
Thank you.
Okay. Hold on one second. Everybody, are these comments for Mr. Abdul Haq?
Mine.
Okay, Ms. Berry was first.
I want to say, I live right there in that neighborhood, and I pass that facility every day, and he has done a marvelous job. From what it looked like, he's beautified the neighborhood. I give him kudos for that, and I want to ask, why are we even exchanging invoices? Do we do that with, like, the Boy Scouts and...
We're doing it for transparency reasons.
Okay.
That's all.
But do we have to do that? That's where I'm confused.
I mean, technically, we don't, but we're doing it for transparency reasons, so that we can keep track of who is using what, whose facility.
Right, he's always been very generous. I don't even know why we would question.
He never used those invoices, to my knowledge, for any IRS or deductions or anything, because, believe me, knowing him, the money he sent, and I'm going to say it, probably he doesn't want me to say it, the money he sent to Nidi family in Lebanon, it's a lot more than the money which is in those invoices. Thank you.
I have a question, Mr. Zaher.
Ms. Fawaz?
Those four hours that Mr. Zaher is talking about for his daughter and the NHS, does that go against the district? Would that be four hours we'd be charged for as a donation for Mr. Mackey?
No. He's not going to even send you an invoice.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Sabo, did you have something?
No, I was just pointing that Nadia had a...
Oh, I'm sorry.
I didn't think you saw her.
Yeah, yeah, I did. I was just letting Mr. Abdul Haq finish. Okay, do we have any more public comments for the Board? All right, I guess we'll go to Board. Did you fill out a sheet?
I didn't know about...
Yeah, if you see Kristin, she'll get you a form to fill out.
Madam President, if I may take a moment, Trustee Berry asked me a question. I forgot to bring it up in my commentary. She asked a question about student enrollment, so I want to give some tentative numbers, because I think today we had, like, 50, 60 people in there enrolling.
Sure.
So, last year, at... Last year in June, we finished the school year. We were at 4,073 students, but that doesn't include Divine Child. You would have to add about another 150 to 200 students for Divine Child. So, the numbers I'm giving you is not with Divine Child. We don't get that until later. Right now, we're at 3,910, so you're looking at a difference of 63 students, I believe. I'm doing my math. No. A little bit more than that. But we don't have all our GSRP numbers in right now. So, right now, our GSRP is at 28, where last year was 106. That number will not jump up until mid-September, early October. So, these numbers are very fluid. They're very active. Plus, these numbers, the last time they were updated, were 10 days ago, so they're not even, as of now, up to date. So, we are holding steady where we were last year, and what I'm looking at right now, I really believe that we're either going to be even, or we may even be up, because our elementary classrooms are up across the board.
Great.
Does that include virtual?
This does not include virtual. So, that's... Thank you for bringing that up. This does not include virtual, because that's not done either. So, it's very fluid right now. We'll have more concrete numbers first week of October, but we'll continue to update the Board. So, I'm sorry, Trustee Berry, I forgot to add it to my commentary.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Secretary?
Mr. Williamson?
Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to... Beginning of this month, the Crestwood Marching Chargers had their band camp, and I just want to commend how well they did. Also, there was a bit of a COVID outbreak, and the staff handled it, I think they handled it really above and beyond. Only four students at the camp actually came down with it, which is the close contact, actually, I thought was really well. Also, tomorrow evening is a car wash from 5:00 to 7:00 at the school, with proceeds going to the boosters. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to Board comments. Mr. Sabo.
Yeah. You know, first of all, I want to... This is a little personal for me, but I want to congratulate our retirements. You know, I want to congratulate Sally Baumgartner from our Special Ed Paraprofessional Program, Mr. Michael Maza from our Custodian Group, which help us keep our buildings as operational as they are, and then Mr. Gary Barnhart, Mr. Bernhardt, I should say, I'm sorry, was the Athletic Secretary and just recently retired. Having been in contact with him over the years and how he held this district together from an athletic standpoint for such a long time, doing things that should have been done by other people. And for those of you that don't know him, if you've ever been to an athletic event, a probably a music concert, anything with the arts, he was the guy by the cones, blocking off certain parts of the driveway. And he was also our swim coach, and I just want to congratulate him. He is a fantastic person, and I wish him the best in retirement. Also, I... We've talked about a lot of things tonight, and it hurts me, and I said it earlier, I'll repeat it again, to not... I just want to protect our children. I want to protect our children from all the nuances that exist, whether they be in city, county, state, federal government. Our children don't know what they don't know. You said it earlier. Some people don't know what they don't know. Our children don't know what they don't know. It's our job to protect them. It's our job to make sure that we are providing them the best opportunity to be successful, as we see every year through graduations. We see people going to Ivy League schools, University of Michigan, Ann Arbor, Michigan State, wherever it may be, we're putting them in the best positions, and we've got Wherever it may be, we're putting them in the best positions and we've got to continue to put them first. I ask that out loud. I was approached earlier about a comment that I made about financials, um, in the hallway by a specific person. I would never, in any way, for those of you on Facebook or any other social media platforms that don't come to this meeting to share your thoughts, condone anything fraudulent or perceived to be fraudulent. So it's a whole different discussion here, but I wanted to make sure I put that out there for those people that, I guess, made comments about me saying I approved or I accepted fraud. I would never do that. For those of you that would say that, obviously don't know me as a person. Uh, and I know the person was just sharing information. I'm not offended. I'm not offended because people share their comments all the time. You know, keyboard warriors, I call them. I invite you to come to the school board, uh, meetings and, and share your thoughts here. But, um, no one can ever say that I don't put the children first and I do it with integrity, honesty, and a commitment to these children that you've never seen before and I can assure you of that. That's all that I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Berry.
I just want to say, um, looking forward to having the students back in the buildings, excited for them. And hopefully we have a happy and healthy new school year and, uh, kudos to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kaminsky?
Um, I wanted to say I'm excited about the Wednesday night, um, where we're going to pass out backpacks for the kids. And kudos to the PTA and all their hard work. Um, congratulations to all our kids who took their time this summer and participated in the Dearborn Arts Program for Beauty and the Beast and Annie. And, um, Mr. Rashid Baydoun, who's one of our employees here at the school, did a lot of work on that. And, um, yeah, thank you. I just, I, you know, these kids work really hard and they take their time in the summer, just like, you know, all of our sports and band and everybody take a lot of time. I don't think people realize the time and effort in it. And so, uh, kudos. It was awesome. Um, the other thing I wanted to say is, some time ago, a long time ago, um, I did not ask Mrs. Fawaz to give her comments during a rather nasty, tense time, um, when we voted, um, to censor her over something. And for my part in that, I apologize that I did not give you the right to speak. And I did call you on that. It's something that's bothered me for a long time. Um, I never say I'm perfect, but I own what I say and what I do. So I wanted to mention that and I hope we have a good school year without COVID, without COVID.
Thank you, Sue. I appreciate that.
Yep. Thank you, Sue. Uh, Najah?
So I have a couple of things.
Madam Secretary.
Um, I have a couple of things. So first of all, I think we all know how hard it is to come here and disagree. And then at the end of the day, try to come together. You know, consensus of the board and, you know, these MASB classes that I've taken that sometimes I think when I, when I listen to them, I'm like, God, you've really got to try and push past your feelings and make a decision that you don't always agree with. And there are times that we sit here and I know we don't all agree and we try and come together and do what, what's best. I mean, ultimately, we're, we're trying to do what's best for the district. Um, and I just hope that we, we continue that way. Um, Wednesday's back to school event, so you guys were really boring when you described what was happening at Wednesday's event. We are not just giving away backpacks.
Sorry.
Which is, which is great. Um, and thank you to, um, United Way for donating the backpacks. But we have tried to cram in a lot in a very short period of time. Meeting with our PTAs and kind of coming together to see what each PTA can donate and bring to the table. And, um, we've got an obstacle course, a Hungry Hungry Hippo's inflatable. Um, we will have a bunch of food trucks out front. We will have a dunk tank that Dr. Musalem will be the first one to go into. He didn't tell you guys that, but he will be the first.
We didn't know that.
Hold on. I'm gonna, I already let people, I'm coming from a fundraising event.
Uh huh.
So once I get there.
Okay, so we're going to save your quarter of the, um, time. So, um, we have, um, oh, it, everything is free. I've got somebody telling me some things to add to that that I forgot. Everything is free. Food trucks are not free, um, in all fairness.
Oh, yeah.
But they will be donating a, um, a portion back to our, the elementary school PTAs. Seeing as Riverside was pretty successful in our fundraisers last year, we, we don't really, we're going to allow the, the elementary schools to take, to take their, um, the donation, the, uh, portion back from, from the food trucks. But, um, basketball games, we, we've got a lot of volunteers coming out. Each PTA will have a table. We have the mobile clinic. Um, Family Doc will be coming out. Um, see, uh, there's a lot you missed, Dr. Musalem. The Family Doc will be out and he'll be doing physicals for the students. Um, it'll be really nice. I know, I know you want, you were trying to let, you were saving it for me, I know.
This is why we have a team. You know, the team does all that.
You were saving it for me to announce, so, um, looking forward to it. I mean, we really tried to come together and work hard to get it, to get it done in such a short period of time, so we're excited for it.
Great, and we appreciate all the hard work that you've put in.
Definitely, definitely.
And the team has put in. Uh, Mr. Vidun?
So, um, first of all, I just want to reflect on, uh, the security presentation earlier. I, I know it's never done. Let's stay on top of it, continuous updates. As soon as we get comfortable, that's when we let our guard down. So I appreciate the team keeping, uh, on top of that. I do want to touch on, um, our athletic field. Um, we talked about a lot about how potentially dangerous our grass field is and all the children we've lost in the past, uh, during their athletic time playing on the field. And I mean by lost, I mean by injuries. Uh, we did have another injury last week. A young man, um, hurt his knee running, hit a little bit of a ditch on our practice field. It is what it is. But again, you can't put cost on a children's safety. So for everyone out there questioning anything that the district's moving forward in regards to events, I urge you to, you know, go out there and watch these kids and just, just see how they're running on this field. Unfortunately, in the past, it hasn't been addressed. Um, I don't want to share that, uh, that person's name because I haven't asked if I could. But, um, another thing, uh, please look at the calendar. Our Crestwood calendar should be online and updated with all of our athletic events. Uh, soccer's ramping up. I know, uh, JV football's playing Wednesday at Crestwood at six PM. Varsity's away at Roseville at seven PM on Thursday. Um, we should also, our, show our support to, you know, all the sports in general. I know Dr. Musalem is really pushing our administrators and our team to have the kids be multi-sport and/or multi-club folks, whether it's fine arts or, you know, swimming or football, whatever. I think that's very important and it, it's only going to be reflective top-down, right? So thank you for doing that. Um, also, uh, had a great meeting today with our, um, theater director, uh, in the district. And, uh, I just want to say, you know, reflecting back on our kids doing these great shows, uh, like trustee Kaminsky touched on, Beauty and the Beast and Annie, they were just amazing shows. I mean, that DYT program is just unreal and I had a couple of kids in it as well. Um, but just looking at seeing the kids grow up and how they change and how they perform, these are our kids here in our district. So I want to say thank you to Rashid and the DYT team. But also here at Crestwood, you know, we got to move forward as well. You know, our theater program is, is, I, I don't want to say it's lacking because when I watch those shows, I'm always at awe as well. Um, but, uh, we need to show a little bit more, more support from the community for our hometown shows as well. So I, I know we discussed that today, uh, so I want to say thank you to Ms. Kubik for that. And, um, also, you know, thank you to the United Way for the five hundred backpacks and also to Webb. Thank you.
Ms. Fawaz? Thank you. Um, I want to welcome everyone back for this, uh, school year. Fall is my favorite time too. Um, and I know today went really well. I, I heard from, uh, parents for the fifth grade, uh, picture day here. People were in and out, um, and that's going to be all week for the, uh, different grade levels. Um, just want to let everyone know to, because even I was, forgot about it too. But, um, fill out your emergency card and bring it with you when you take your picture because they are, they do, um, ask you for that. And, um, I did get a lot of calls last week, so in case you haven't, um, checked the, uh, websites for all the elementary schools, for school supplies, it is listed on each of the elementary schools' website. And then Riverside's was mailed and I believe the high school is online also. Um, uh, next thing I did want to say is, uh, at, for Athletico Physical Therapy, it's a physical therapy place on, um, Ford Road. They are collecting, I believe it's until September.
I have to look.
Uh, they're collecting right now until, I think, the second week of September. Uh, we'll get a date. But, um, any school supplies for, just for the Crestwood School District kids. So, um, you can go either donate supplies or, uh, donate money and it all goes to our kids, uh, here in the district. So when you go out and buy the stuff for your kids, you know, you can get something extra and throw it in there for someone else. Um, and that's it. Thank you.
My turn. I would like to say, and some people would probably tell me not to or advise me not to, but I have known Mike Mackey for a very long time and I appreciate everything he's done for our school district. I appreciate all of the time he's put into our school district. And, um, I know all of the volunteer work that he's done and the donations that he's made to charities and probably get mad because I'm saying it, but I don't care. And, um, I just personally want to thank him for that on behalf of myself, the kids who receive everything that he gives them and the kids who benefit and the reason that we all sit at, oh, Mike is here. The reason that we sit at, um, this table, uh, i- is for those kids. So, um, I just personally wanted to make sure that I thanked him for that, uh, before we close today.
Madam Chair? Yes.
Before we close, I think the lady attendee now wants to speak. That's up to you. I'm just.
Mike, did you want to address the, the board today? If you want to, you can just fill out a form real quick. We'll wait for you. Well.
I mean, it's your discretion.
Okay. We can. We didn't go over, uh, half hour.
Uh, good evening, Mike Mackey.
One second, Mr. Mackey.
Sure.
Uh, the secretary is going to read a comment first and then you can make your comments.
So this meeting of the board is held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There's a time for public participation during the meeting. It's indicated in the agenda. This is not a time for debate or argument. Do not mention any student or staff's names. In order to permit a lot, a fair allotment of time to participants, speakers will be limited to three minutes. The president may extend this time to five minutes per person when needed. Up to half hour is provided for public input and direct all questions to the board president.
Thank you. Uh, Mike Mackey, Elite Sports, uh, good evening. Um, first of all, I would have been here a lot earlier, but I do coach, uh, a volunteer coach at the Dearborn High Raiders. So for that, I apologize to you. Um, a couple of things. Number one, I want to thank the board for allowing me to speak. Uh, my vision always is and always will be with the community that we work together um, to make sure that our kids are provided with the best services possible. Uh, anything I can do to help, uh, I've demonstrated it. I don't post it on social media. I believe my deeds do the talking and I like to keep it quiet. So I'm not going to stand up here and mark through a whole list of things that I have done for the school district. I would never do that. I'm not that person. But I do take it a little bit offensive, uh, when some people post some things that are untrue. So I want to clarify one thing. Um, if anyone's come to my facility in the last two years, um, the first year, I never invoiced Crestwood for one thing. The only reason I started to invoice Crestwood High School is so I can have a tracking system of what I offer the district and in return, what the district offers our youth programs that we have. Um, I'm not looking to collect anything. Uh, if the district will write me a receipt at the end of the year of a donation, that'd be very great. If they can't, I understand. That's not an issue. Um, I just want us hopefully have the same vision and the vision is to do what's best for our kids. Um, again, and that's, you know, basically my vision. It always has been. It'll always will be. And, uh, that's if I, if you have any questions for me, please, if I need to clarify, I would love to.
Should I go?
Okay, uh, Ms. Janu?
So I just want to clarify, how long has the facility been open? Because I, I was.
So we opened in COVID and I think that we shut down and I think Crestwood. So a little bit about what Crestwood High School does at Elite Sports. Number one, they do their testing and, you know, all this stuff can be verifiable. Um, you guys have principal, uh, some people made some organizations that they're fake receipts, so I want to clarify this. All this stuff is through your AD and your assistant principal. Please, go ask them to show you how many times Crestwood High School students been in my place at zero charge. You've had two hundred kids come and you're set up at six AM and they get out at three PM doing testing there, okay? Um, you've had your gym classes at my facility. You've had your baseball coach use my facility inside and outside. You've had your softball coach use my facility inside. You've had your football coach use my facility inside. But you know what? It's, warms my heart when I see those kids there because I coached half of those kids, so I'm okay with it, okay? And if they need a water, they're going to get one from me. If they need a Gatorade, they're going to get one from me. Absolutely at no charge, but go ahead. I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. So I, I guess, I mean, I, I think we know each other and so this isn't personal for me. I don't care. And I, and I know that in a lot of ways, you're the same way. Business is business. But at the same time, um, you do things to protect yourself as the district does for themselves. Um, but I appreciate the working relationship and I appreciate, appreciate what you've done for the kids.
Thank you.
Always. I mean, unless we do something that in turn that you feel we wrong you and I don't think that that would ever be any of our intentions, we ob- obviously don't want to do that to you. Um, so again, we just appreciate all that you do for the kids.
Thank you.
I know I start to ramble sometimes, but you know, I, we appreciate you. So that's it.
I, I just want to personally say, um, what you've done for the community, uh, goes unnoticed, honestly. The other thing is, I'll never forget when my, when my kids were with the Raiders. Uh, I don't know if you remember, when those girls didn't have the shoes and you went out and bought every little girl a pair of tennis shoes.
Thank you.
So they all matched. Those are the things that make a community. And you're, you've always been very generous and, you know, we will always support you with whatever you need because we know you support us.
I appreciate it and I'll continue to support the kids.
Thank you. Mr. Vidun?
So I, I want to start off by saying, you know, thank you to you, but that's not even half of it. I want to thank the Elite brand for everything you just named that we do. And I want to thank Ali, MJ, the, the folks that work and run your facility. Because you're not there a lot of the time. It's them who open the doors with wide open. And I think it's, you've made it clear to everyone there that when Crestwood comes, it's carte blanche. And I know that and I've experienced it. So really, this is a thank you to Elite.
Thank you.
And to those folks that run Elite when you're not there. And to be honest with you, it's a privilege for us to embrace the relationship. And honestly, I, I'm always going to be that fighter for the kids as everyone here is. I know they are. Um, and we got to keep doing what's best for them. So thank you.
Appreciate it.
Ms. Kaminsky?
Um, Mike, I thank you when you weren't here. I'm going to thank you again.
Thank you.
And you know where I live and I see what you do for Field of Dreams, of things that you don't say what you do. And I see what you do in the community. So.
Thank you so much.
A thank you is, is so meek and not enough, but it's heartfelt.
I'm humbled and honored. Thank you.
Ms. Fawaz? So I have a co, I, I have more than a few questions, uh, Mr. Mackey. So the, from all the paperwork that I looked at, okay, so the Dearborn Heights Little League or North Dearborn Heights, whatever you call it, that contract was with a David Stein that expired back in, what, twenty eighteen?
Correct.
Very different and not the same as Elite Sports, right?
Hundred percent.
Okay, so that one looks like, what, disbanded, hasn't filed anything with the state of Michigan since like twenty sixteen, I believe it was, when, when we looked it up.
I don't have that answer.
So you don't have anything to do with the Little League.
So if you have a few minutes, I want to take you back if that's okay.
Well, I, I just wanted, these are all the questions I'm looking at.
Yeah.
Then the, the invoices, okay? We have five invoices. I know you said you just started, uh, doing them at the district's request. There's five of them. Of the five, two of them have the exact same invoice number. And then within the contents, like you were saying about the testing, you have testing that you put in there for four days straight, October, like thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, which is a Wednesday through a Saturday. And the exact same amount of hours and monies charged and showing for the same day. We all know Saturday is possibly a, a makeup day, but it's certainly not going to be the same amount of.
Actually, you're a hundred percent right. There's no students in there on Saturday. So just to give you a little background, I'm not the one that does the invoices. And since the district is not paying me anyway, which I would never accept money from you guys, uh, that could have been a clerical error, but her name is Vanessa. I can give you her number. Please call her. Have her go over all the dates with you. Have her give you all the invoices. It's very transparent here.
But, but it's not transparent because the invoice is not reflecting that.
Well, the one thing I want to talk about the Saturdays is you have to ensure that that wasn't one of the makeup days for the SAT.
Honestly, it could have been, but you know what? I'm not even.
I'm just saying, we use Saturdays for SAT makeup.
To me, it's.
There, what I'm saying is, on your invoices, there was a lot of errors, okay? Now, I know you're saying your employee.
I'll be happy to, I'll, I'll be happy to address it tomorrow morning and I'll, and we'll be sending you an email.
And, and then I'd like to see on the invoice that it's actual time, you know, that you're donating time, not. The invoice looks as if the kids were there and you charged us the money and collection. Like all of that just needs to be extremely transparent.
So, so.
Do those invoices say paid?
So you're not, so just so we can clarify, Crestwood has never paid me one dollar. So let's, let's clarify that, number one. Number two, the only reason I started to even produce invoices, so we can track, is how much I use of Crestwood's facility and how much you use of my facility.
Right.
Now, let me answer your question about the North Dearborn Heights Baseball League. So approximately eighteen years ago, my son played on a Little League team there. And I became a board member and obviously wanted to make sure that that playing surface was number one, safe for kids and productive. So I've been there through the whole time. When COVID came, the NDHBL has never put back their Little League program. More than anything, I would love that Little League program to come back because it's an asset to the community and it's an asset to Crestwood High School and their baseball team.
It expired in twenty eighteen. COVID didn't even hit till twenty nineteen.
Again, I wasn't a part of the NDHBL then, so I can't tell you when it expired. I have no idea. I was telling you along the time how I got there is my son at four or five years old played T-ball.
Mr. Mackey, I'm sorry. I don't mean to interrupt you, but, uh, for the sake of time.
Yeah.
Um, if trustee Fawaz has some questions for you regarding your invoices and it sounds like they are clerical errors. So, um, if we could facilitate those questions through our administration's office, through Dr. Musalem and Penny, if you could get a list of your questions to Dr. Musalem and you facilitate getting the answers back from Mike for us, no problem. We don't, I, I think it's better that you answer the questions that way. Take your time. Take a look at what, uh, this Vanessa person did. And, uh, maybe you can get some answers when you have stuff in front of you.
Sure.
And then, um.
Last question, just for the integrity, from, for my own integrity, okay? And for the protection of the board. We send you a donation letter thanking you for the donation.
I never got one.
So you don't file anything with your account?
I have never got a donation letter from you guys, ever.
We have never sent them a donation letter up to this point.
We should.
Oh, I thought you said we did.
No, at the end of the fiscal year, we will.
But we've never sent them one?
But we have not done it in the past, no.
Okay, so that answers that.
Any other questions?
No, but I stopped talking when I, when I noticed that you sat in the room, and I just wanted to tell you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything that you do.
I appreciate it, thank you.
I know you're going to kill me, but I'm going to say it anyway. Mr. Mackey here has saved more than one life that I know, and one of them is very dear to me. And there is a person who had a stroke and a heart attack within one year and could not go to work anymore. And Mr. Mackey supported him and his family and made sure that he provided medical insurance for this family until that person was able to do so themselves. And, you know, don't get mad at me for saying it, but we, we thank you. And I, I just wanted to illustrate the kind of person that you are and the things I know about you.
We're not surprised.
So, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate you, thank you.